Big flag, too.
In the name of Jesus, Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you that this is the day that you have made and we choose to rejoice and be glad there again. We thank you, Father God, that even as we deliberate on the items that we have before us this morning, we thank you for your wisdom and your guidance. We thank you, Father God, to repeat the will of Jesus over all of the residents of Jefferson County. We thank you that no evil shall be followed and that we shall play a common and drawing. And Father, we thank you for giving your angels charge over them to keep them in all their ways. We thank you, God, for bringing finances, resources, and influence to Jefferson County. Every need that we have has already been provided, so, Father, we walk in full provision in your Son, Jesus' name. So, Lord, even as we come together as one body, we thank you, Father God, that we minister the gospel through the work that we do, bless the works of our hands, Father, bind us together in one spirit, one faith, and one spirit on one accord, in Jesus' name, pray again, man.
Appreciate it. If I place a flag, a petition, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Just stay right where you are. Uh, we have two presentations. One is the Alabama Athletic Association Resolution Presentation, recognition of Midfield High School.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, we're gonna call into the chambers. Uh, we're still on a social.
Social, yes, ma'am.
Uh, but I'm very excited for Midfield City School. Uh, their boys' basketball, their varsity team won the 2A championship for the state of Alabama. Uh, last year, we had, uh, two teams, and those teams that we had, uh, were Huffman High School. They won the 6A, uh, boys' varsity championship. And then we had the 5A, was Fairfield Boys Basketball Team. So today, we're gonna have a little diversity come down on me. And these young men, uh, I'm happy to say are doing well academically. Uh, a lot of them are seniors, and we had the opportunity to go out on behalf of the Commission on yesterday, uh, and, and give them some good congratulations, so we're seeing one another two days in a row. And so I'm gonna read the resolution that is presented to them this morning on behalf of this filing. It is, whereas it is the policy of the Jefferson County Commission to recognize stellar accomplishments by those who impact our community for the better. And whereas it is our esteemed honor to recognize the athletic achievement of the Midfield High School Boys Basketball Team as they triumph to win the Class 2A State Boys Basketball Championship presented by the Alabama High School Athletic Association on March 4th, 2021, at the Bill Harris Arena in Birmingham, Alabama. And whereas the Midfield High School Patriots defeated the Lynette High School Panthers with a 58-54 victory, earning the state title. And whereas by this team's amazing performance, the players, coaching staff, faculty, community stakeholders have conveyed impressive distinction to Jefferson County, Alabama, not only on their athletic ability, but their clear demonstration of hard work, enthusiasm to the sport of basketball, and impressive sportsmanship. And whereas by this team's noble discipline of the sport of basketball, it will indeed inspire their fellow classmates to strive to achieve parallel goals. And whereas the Midfield High School Patriots finished their 2021 overall season with a 25-6 record and a fifth Alabama High School Athletic Association 2A state championship. And whereas Coach Courtney Jones and his entire staff are to be commended for their leadership, skillful training, and patience in leading the Midfield High School Patriots to the boys' basketball state title game for the eighth time in nine Final Four appearances, as well as their fifth state title since 2012. And now, therefore, being resolved, that Commissioner LaShawna Scales and the Jefferson County Commission do hereby recognize the 2021 Midfield High School Boys Basketball Team as the official AHSAA Class 2A State Boys Basketball Championship. And if you all can stand and give them a round of applause, those that are here. Uh, I don't mean to make you do it even louder, so can you clap a little bit louder? Thank you, Commissioner. And let me tell you why I say that, because I said to them on yesterday, the principal of Huffman High School said when he came, for these young men to come to the county courthouse, and they are not here because they've done something wrong, but because they did something right. That's why I'm asking you to stand and give them an ovation, because all of us need encouragement, and certainly, we want them to know that the community and the Commission is in full support of them. So we're gonna have our athletic director come, come on up, and then next behind him will be the coach, and then we have one of the team's players, which is the MVP. Uh, he's gonna speak, and then everyone will introduce themselves.
I'd be happy for Midfield High School Superintendent Professor Williams to pose for to meet your honor. To Midfield High School to say thank you for all your support.
First of all, I'll say good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, with the other guys, uh, that have been today. Uh, I wish I would continue to thank these young men. Uh, as you said, you know, it's a lot of things that you do wrong at this time. Uh, for them to give me the opportunity to, uh, gain up praise and to work with them every day, uh, not just on basketball, but just life, and to achieve what they have done for the state of Midfield, uh, for the entire state, to be honest, uh, it's a great thing. Uh, I pray that they continue to take everything that we learned throughout this year, uh, take forward as a young man, uh, go on for the education, uh, for this, for the workforce, uh, and everything else that's possible that comes with it. Uh, again, I want to say thank you, uh, thank you, can't say thank you enough. Uh, you know, again, you know, we do, we try to do great things around here, uh, as far as trying to give something, make a tribute for the rest of their lives, or for their history, anything like that. Uh, any donations possible, any donation that you all want to deal on that note, uh, rather than that again. Just thank you, thank you again for having us here, and may God bless you all.
Thank you, Coach, for what you do for these young men inside.
Good morning, young boys.
Morning.
My name is Demar. My name is Demar, and I want to thank you all for the support, too, because y'all didn't have to do this. So, once again, I say thank you to all of you.
Are you the high schooler? I want to challenge you to one-on-one with our county attorney.
Good, good things come out of Midfield High School.
My name is James White.
My name is Kevin Brown.
My name is Shannon Jones, and I play quarterback for Midfield.
My name is Anthony Dan, I play shooting guard.
My name is Val, I play shooting guard.
My name is Tony Mitchell, and I play one, two, three.
My name is Martin Jackson. Um, I play quarterback for Midfield. Um, we're running this season on the bench.
My name is Lee Kansas, and I play quarterback.
My name is Mark, I play four.
My name is Trevor Lance Brown, I'm a goalkeeper.
Scorekeeper.
Bookkeeper.
Scorekeeper, they all love it.
My name is Jay Smith, I'm here assisting.
So again, I thank the Commission for the impact that we're making, uh, as a body. Uh, it's proven that every time that, uh, there's a state championship, seems like Jefferson County continues to win. Uh, so I want to say congratulations, uh, to you all. There is, uh, going to be an item that comes up before, uh, the Commission in support of, uh, their blessed division of, uh, uh, their, their program. Uh, but I can't say thank you enough considering, uh, the amount of adversity that they all have to overcome. Uh, it makes me proud. Uh, I'm glad that I'm beyond just a little bit of crying every time I talk about it, uh, because I understand, uh, what they have to go up against, and that's what we talked about on yesterday. They all always have the best equipment to work with. They don't have certain things that, you know, typically that you'll find in some other Jefferson County schools, but they make the best of what they have. And so I can't say thank you enough, as their county commissioner, uh, that this is the next generation of leaders, and I'm very proud to be able to call them my own. So, God bless you, and we're gonna be waiting on you outside. All right, so we got another group that's coming in. Oh, thank you. And, uh, so we have another group of, uh, this time we have the girls. Uh, they won for Carver High School, and as they're getting ready to come in, want to give you a little history about them as well. Uh, the girls' basketball team for Carver High School, this was their first time playing in, uh, the Alabama Athletic Association's championship. And these girls came out, it was only seven, so I want to tell you as they're walking in, uh, only seven of them, so that means, that meant, or means, that they had to play the entire game. Nobody could sit out, no one could sit out. And, uh, so we had the opportunity to go over to Carver, and what I'm going to do, just as a courtesy to, uh, these beautiful young ladies, uh, I'm gonna read it, and then I'll kind of skip the volume, because you all have basically heard it, but we want to talk about their victory. And then we're gonna have Coach, he's gonna come and speak, and then we'll have Ms. Dorsey, who's gonna come behind him, and then everyone is gonna introduce them. And I'm gonna give them a little something that Helen, uh, gave us on last year, because I thought it was so monumental, especially when you're talking about seven players, and they had to play the entire game. So anyone that knows about sports, and I'm learning, uh, that you know that that is a tremendous victory within itself. So I'll read it. Whereas it is the policy of Jefferson County Commission to recognize historic accomplishments by those who impact our community for the better. And whereas it is our esteemed honor to recognize the athletic achievement of Carver High School Girls Basketball Team as they triumph to win the Class 5A State Girls Basketball Championship presented by the Alabama High School Athletic Association on March 4th at the Bill Harris Arena in Birmingham, Alabama. Whereas seven courageous young women, representing the Carver High School Rams, defeated May Jefferson High School Jaguars with a 78-69 victory, earning the state title. And whereas by this team's amazing performance, the players, coaching staff, faculty, community stakeholders have conveyed impressive distinction to Jefferson County, Alabama, not only for their athletic ability, but for their clear demonstration of hard work, enthusiasm to the sport of basketball, and impressive sportsmanship. And now, therefore being resolved, that Commissioner LaShawna Scales and the Jefferson County Commission do hereby recognize the 2021 Carver High School Girls Basketball Team as the official AHSAA Class 5A State Girls Basketball Champions. So, you can come on up, Coach. If you all would mind, just stand up again and give these young ladies a round of applause. Thank you for being precise, and I'm hearing that. Yeah, and, uh, go ahead, Coach.
Good morning, um, Coach Wilson here for Carver High School. Uh, first of all, thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to come, and be with you all today. Thank you a lot for everything you've done, and it's successful, appreciate that. Um, briefly talking about my young ladies again, she touched on it briefly. Um, the accomplishment that these young ladies have achieved is more than remarkable. Um, seven young ladies, um, seven teenage girls that happened to play a game of basketball, knowing that they had the discipline, they had to maintain a certain level, um, structure, and they did a wonderful job. When you sit back and look at the process, as you're coaching, you really don't pay it that much attention, because it's what you expect, it's what they expect, us getting to coach them. We expect them to play. And when you sit back and look at the accomplishment, um, seven young ladies playing a high level of 5A basketball here in the state of Alabama, and only get five foul, and we play an aggressive type of ball, we never change the way we play. They bothered to do it, they would let us change it. And wanted to make sure that we continue to do the same thing that we're doing, and they're in shape, and they're physical, fit, it's, yes, you know, remarkable, and we're great, really, very, very proud of you. I tell you that all the time, I love you. And for young ladies to have, um, where we come from, they're, sometimes it's not the best situation. Um, for them to overcome that and to make the best out of the situation that they're in, they're fighters. And, and they were born to be fighters, and we're grateful, appreciate, love them. And once again, I say thank you all, we appreciate it.
What's your breakdown, your fingers?
Right now, we currently have, I have two players that are not with me. One player, um, is in the Mississippi Alabama All-Star Game, she's the first player at Carver High School to be nominated, Andrew Plaim, that game, um, Miss Andrea Wright. Uh, she was also the Turner MVP. Um, she's also the first player, um, at Carver High School to sign a, a bigger one, basketball scholarship. She will be going to Central Arkansas, um, into Fall, so that's something that we're very, very proud of, of her. We just have one that is under me.
Uh, Coach, Coach, just, Commissioner Tyson.
That's right.
Okay, yeah, I remember, I know, I know the girl. And I wanted to speak to the seventh grade. Uh, I knew a story about me when I was actually in, we didn't have middle school, when I was in school, yet elementary. I played basketball when I was in the seventh grade at Jackson Elementary School. So we went to West End and played. I was actually, uh, one of the seventh, and, uh, I will never forget that experience and what I learned. Uh, from seventh grade, playing varsity basketball, and also playing with, uh, with Tom. I played myself in grade eleven. So I learned so much, uh, these, uh, older, uh, young ladies. They taught me the game of winning and how to accept a loss. And I think that that has stayed with me, uh, all of my life. I have committed, uh, to the young ladies, and they told me a lot of things that they needed, and I have committed to Carver to give them $1,500. I talked to the young ladies about that, and your seniors, I did apply. I put in an application for your 52 seniors, right? I put in for them to receive a scholarship, uh, from, uh, the National Coalition of Black City Participation. And I will let you know, uh, if they won, uh, within a couple weeks, I will, uh, definitely let you know. And I know seven players, there's a lot of wear and tear, a lot of, they may be in physical shape and mentally, and are to endure all those, now, you're talking about all of them, that they have to do, and actually win and be successful. And the seventh grader, this, just tried hanging in there to make sure that she was at the, uh, at the state square, she was competitive, you know, just, just totally getting promoted. She had a big challenge, and passed all to her. Uh, I'm just, I am very excited, and I grew up after me, so I totally understand. My office is prepared to give you, um, um, the $1,500 and pass all to Carver, uh, High School.
Thank you a lot, appreciate that. Now, seven really happen to be my daughters.
Good morning. I'm Anna, it's Kevin Dorsey. First off, I say thank you all for giving us this opportunity to be here. Um, Wilson always told us to weather the storm. I mean, no matter what comes towards us, we have to keep going. Like, it hasn't always been easy for us, you see, but we managed to obviously come out of the top. So, with Wilson, I say thank you for being here, seeing, and thank you all.
So, come up and say your name, and we'll put you up.
Um, I'm Kavali Wilson, and I'm a.
My name is Jeanne, I'm a yard, and I'm four.
My name is Patricia Sermon, I'm a four.
My name is Destiny Nelson, I'm a shooting guard.
Call up, Coach.
My name is Latrice Rayman, I'm a season coach.
So, you all who have as a body, uh, just like we did with Midfield High School, uh, there's going to be something that's gonna come before the Commission uh, in support of these young women, we already talked about it, very excited for them. Any Commissioner have anything that you'd like to say? I don't want to just hog it until I have, uh, my sweetheart to speak.
I just want to say, wow, seven players, George. I played basketball, I know how it is for a guy like that. And, you know, I don't think I've ever played a full game. So, way to go, guys. And I saw them talking out there, and I think they're talking amongst themselves, saying, they could, they could take that midfield bunch right now. Congratulations, well done.
And so I asked Destiny to come, because, come on, Destiny. So, we were talking about, uh, hard work, and I just want you to share with the Commission, what does hard work look like to you, and what we talked about the other day?
I want to practice, 6:00 AM, 6:00 PM, no sleep. Practice all day, everything, no breaks, all work.
And do the math.
And do the math. So, I wanted to say this very quickly, I said this about the other team, but I'm always, uh, clear, especially when you're talking about in the urban community, what good can come out of the community? And when you're talking about one of the other young ladies, she's not here this morning, but she was talking about mental toughness, toughness that you have to have in order to be able to compete in a game that, first of all, is not necessarily, uh, to your advantage. And then, not only do you come out on top, but this is your first time competing, and you win the first time you go out. And you're playing all seven players the entire game, and so they've already blazed the trail to let folk know, it can be done. All you gotta do is be committed and put your mind to it. So I want you all to just be mindful, that when those two items come before you, it'll be no different than what I did for Huffman High School as well as Midfield, uh, that our district is always, as Carver High School is in our district, uh, that we're going to support them fully. And I'm thankful, because I know that that's the spirit of the Commission, that we all are in support of all of our school systems and what they do to make us proud. So, again, congratulations, and, uh, I can't say enough that, uh, they made, they made Mom Scales cry, you know, because I know what they're going up against, and I know that, uh, as we continue to spotlight their efforts, it's gonna cause other people to want to use their resources to be able to help them. And I will say this in closing, I don't like to talk about what they don't have, but I will tell you, for them to win, it's no different than what I told the boys on yesterday. Your job is to be committed to the academics, get out there on the court, and win. Our job as stakeholders and leaders of this county is to invest and make sure that you know that the community is supporting you 100%. So, again, congratulations, and thank you all for allowing me this presentation this morning.
Hey, Coach. The gold target on you back now, really awesome. How you doing, man? No, no pressure, dawg. I'll, I'll see you next year.
So what we gonna do, you remember, you remember these, um, uh, hold on, just a minute, Commissioner Tyson, if you don't mind. Remember last year, oh, Miss Helen, Miss Helen graced us with something, and I didn't have enough of voice, so I said, wait a minute. And when we give these out, of course, our bicentennial year that we celebrated as a county was last year, and so they got a little weight to it, but I wanted to make sure that these girls, give it to the girls, uh, that they got something from us as a Commission, not just money, but to have something that they can be able to call their own, uh, and because every young woman that's gonna get one, we'll make sure the coaching staff does, too, because we want you to mark this time. We want you to make sure that, we want you to come back, we want you to win. But I always say, you declare yourself a winner before the public does. That's how you win, you understand? You don't try to get even with folks, the best way to get even is to what, win? You understand? So, they got it, and I'm really proud for. Commissioner Tyson, you have one more thing you have to say?
Yeah, I would like to, uh, let Coach know, if they believe in scholarship, I would be contacting him, and I would have done that, and then have a mission for the mission to present him with, uh, the win of the scholarship.
Okay, he said, uh, great, thank you. All right, thank you, everybody, appreciate it, thank you.
Good, we know now we're talking about, with our public hearing. First is, uh, some case, C200046, uh, King Mac Dotson, owner of Joey Miller, agent. They're looking for a change in zoning from A1 to RG. Uh, for garden home development with 33 units proposed. Uh, I'm very familiar with it and know where it is. This has been through the, uh, subdivision. And this is, this is just for zoning, my friend.
That's correct, that's correct. And we still have to fly out the subdivision to go for subdivision approval for playing the zoning feature.
So, this is for, this is the first step.
Correct.
In, in order to do this, so I want all of those that are, that are here concerning this, this zones the property from A1
Correct.
to, to where you can actually build a house on.
Correct.
But it's have a certain body type.
Yes, that's right.
Uh, and the rest of the things will, will go further down the line. All right, um, I gave you a pretty good, uh, 8.518, you weren't. I seen the presentation.
I, I'll just state that, uh, the Resilience Policy, the Policy of the Ledges Plan, Planning and Zoning Commission recommends restricting the number to 33 in order to maintain somewhat of a consistency of density to the adjacent housing development from which it's accessed from. Uh, staff has recommended restricting the number to 29 to keep the same density as that development, the planning and zoning commission thought it was, uh, somewhat denitrable, let's go to, uh, restricted probably 33 proposed to 29. So, um, but the Dallas plan, the only recommendation, recommendation as well as a condition that the construction entrance come off of Power 52 and not go to the subdivision, and that entrance would have to be approved by the Department of Rural Transportation.
How many did you bring out?
Um, originally, the advocate had requested going to RT, which is townhomes, and that generated a lot more out of opposition at hearings. Uh, at the second public hearing, I think it was one individual that was there, um, we also received, you know, of course, some emails, uh, phone calls from residents, which all the emails have been included in the package that were due. But the number of, of, of opposition diminished considerably once that, uh, they switched the request from RT to RG. And that, they've been working with the homeowners association to work out some arrangements so that they can be consistent with that, so. And all of the, uh, probably on the telegraphers here, uh, to speak on that, um, as well, so.
And you're where I might go, I'll guess, uh, um, to check and make sure that there's, um, moving and, and, or, I appreciate your interest.
Thank you for that.
Uh, and just then, we locked over. Did the, did the owner, uh, said the advocate agreed to the decrease from 30 to 29, or is that?
Well, no, no, the planning and zoning recommended it to 33, that's what the advocate proposed. Uh, yes, staff came up with the 29 number based on the acreage and the density of the development from which it's, and, and from which it's accessed from. The planning and zoning recommend- The planning and zoning recommendation was to thirty-three, the thinking was.
At this time, we like over. A zoning case, Z two zero 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 four six. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to this? We have a gentleman here, would you please come in and state your name and your address as, as it relates to the property?
Yes, sir. Uh, I'm Joey Miller, I'm representing the applicant, twenty-five hundred South Lake Park. Suite one hundred, Hoover three five two four four. Um. As Mr. Morrison stated, originally, we, we had, uh, townhomes. And after meeting with the neighborhood, uh, Mr. Parrish is here also, the, the developer. And we met with the, uh, homeowners association via Zoom. And we worked out a plan where this, this phase would join their homeowners association that is, you know, with their, their old covetous and restrictions, that would be part of the Rice Creek, you know, neighborhood. We've also proposed, just coming off the existing cir- creek circle for access, having the construction entrance come off Morgan Road, which we have to permit through the county, but that way, the, the. We do front Morgan Road, but the intersection will be so close to the existing Rice Creek lane that, that both I and the traffic. Roads and transportation engineer thought that it's just too, the entrances would be too close together and would be dangerous, actually. So, and, and the street was scuffed in the south or on this piece of property. And so, that's, um, we think that's a much safer alternative than, than having our own entrance come off Morgan Road. Uh, the other thing is the houses would be comparable in value and size to the existing houses. We're looking at between two hundred and forty to two hundred and eighty thousand dollar values, fifteen hundred to twenty-two hundred square feet, which is comparable to the neighborhoods in the north. And, uh, uh, other than that, I can't think of anything, I'd be glad to answer the questions y'all might have.
And you've agreed to go to the covenants of the Rice neighborhood?
Yes, well, we're gonna have our own because they already got theirs, but we're gonna work with them to, once, once all the houses are sold, each house is sold, they will go into the, the Rice Creek homeowners association and they would, we would have our covenants, that, that would become, you know, a part of their overall. It would, it would become one neighborhood, basically, so all the homeowners would be in one, one, one.
How many, how many homes are in the Rice?
Oh, gosh, and you're asking me something I don't know, I'm talking ahead. I bet twenty-eight, but don't hold me too long.
About lot size, what's the lot size of, uh, houses that's there now in the proposed lot size?
Uh, typically, our lots are between hundred and twenty-five feet to hundred and thirty-five feet, feet deep, forty feet wide. Some of them are much deeper than that, uh, they're, they're comparable in size and square footage wise to, to the existing homes.
Your lot size is, proposed lot size is?
Four, forty feet wide to a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty-five feet deep.
And existing homes?
Uh, they're like sixty by one twenty. So they're, like I said, it's about the same square foot.
So you're gonna build a, a comparable house on a twenty-foot smaller lot?
Well, they'll be deep.
I would say, yeah, but that doesn't.
Well, I mean, the, the value of houses is what it is. I mean, they're, they're between two hundred and forty to two hundred and eighty thousand, the, the, the average value of the Rice Creek homes now is about two fifty.
If you were to go back to what, uh, the, uh, planning is already recommended, make the same, um, size, uh, the number of houses, like forty-nine?
Well, you, 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 the lots would be maybe ten percent bigger, maybe, so you might be forty-four, forty-three feet wide. How long does that, a huge difference between forty-foot lot and forty-three foot lot? I mean, the house size is gonna be the same, we're gonna build, but we got the twenty-nine and thirty-three ones. It's just not gonna be that necessary.
I guess, uh, my concern was that, I understand you're talking about the same value, but I appreciate you breaking it. That, that's Rice Creek. Still, and I'm very, very familiar. Uh, I understand that the neighborhood is growing, you've got a full lane highway to front this, this thing. Uh, and I won't answer this, but our roads and trains, I think one of the primary concerns is this, uh, is the market, uh, in this. These houses are going to have to exit during the existing subdivision. And it will double the amount of traffic that they have. Is there anyone that, that would, uh, let these people have a separate entrance and exit? I think that it will, it will quell a lot of the problems and the angst that, that, that I think can be here and that I, that I picked up on. Um, and that's something that, that will probably, we're zoning today.
Right.
I understand, and, and that's something that will come at the next stage.
Right, we, we do feel like he's correct. Multiple entrances and exits that close together wouldn't be a safe. But detailed study will have to be provided. That exact question will be looked at when he gets ready to turn in his actual plaque. Located in the driveway and all that. Twenty-eight houses, the car count wouldn't be that great, but, you know, depending on what the, you know, the land around it and some other factors. That question will be answered in detail under the next stages.
That, that property in that area is evolving so quickly now. Uh, you have to cover up this life of the street running. You have, uh, I still can't envision what that road is going to look like when you travel there yet. So, uh, we have challenges with that area. The challenges that we have is to make sure that we have, um, orderly growth in that area. Because when you don't do it right, you might be such a people man. You might have people that are moving in, and you might have people that are moving in a park. And it's our job to make sure, if this commission chooses to move forward with this, that, that we do our job to make sure that that, that's done. And, uh, and we need to listen to our residents as we do.
Absolutely.
Back to sir. Yes, sir, sure, there.
Y'all have any other questions?
I'd like to do it. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to that? Please don't call.
First of all, good morning, thank you all for your time and patience. My name is Calvin Cook. I'm, uh, me and my wife, Oprah, we're the owner of one of the houses. But, um, young man, I'm saying, it's a concrete, I mean, construction entrance. And the construction entrance, he's talking about referring to actually my driveway. And we were trying to, I understand, really, because he, you say Highway fifty-two, but he kept saying Highway fifty-two, so what I did, I'm like, well, I don't own them all, I'm like. Because even around, uh, off the phone to get to where you need to get to is my driveway. That's it. There's no other way to get back there. And so even for, even at breakfast shows, uh, to us in the breakfast, we offered them, because Rice Creek, when they did come, that was one of their biggest complaints, there's no, like you say, second way in. And my concern was where, where I live at, I thought about, so what about emergencies? What about the children, school buses and all that? And when we said, me and my wife talked about it, hey, with us, we said, well, we're willing to help them out, too, right, if they need to, say, say, and, and to all use our road. But I, we got you, that's just something we can give a road and discuss and see how we go about doing that. But, and said, no, just like to your point, when the road gives you, the, the road is getting wider. We have a lot of construction going on right now, my yard is full as we speak. What, for what is going on? So, but that being said, the young man, the comment, says the entrance way is too close. Well, think about it like this, I'm leaving in and out myself from that same road that he called a construction road. If you can use that as a construction road, why you can't make that into a, a road in and out of the road? Just last night, while I was at work, I received a phone call from one of Rice Creek's residents who said they're looking at now the school buses coming up in there, I had to do a turnaround. And with that being said, she said, well, we just paid the, our, our own asphalt to do this, so who's gonna be keeping that up? That's the question, you have to come down and talk to the county commissioners about it. Because once you make that one-way entrance and one-way out, in case of emergency, we just had a real serious incident not too long ago, where someone had, uh, committed emergency. They blocked the whole entrance off, but nobody can get in, and so you had residents who had to sit apart to the side of the road because they could not get in. The handlers and the police, which they do, and they understood the reason why, but it had to have been another entrance, some of those did, because they got to the cross to the house. And the whole thing is this, what we, we might like to say, we're willing to support and help in the way we can, but at the same time, just don't try to bulldoze your way in. Show some respect to us, as we're, because we're going to, I see, come talk to us, and we might be able to solve it now.
I think, I think we, that, you're and I on the same page.
Yeah.
And, Cal, that's, this is, this is just a zoning thing. Uh, but when we work through that plaque and we work through the ingress and egress of, of this, you have to keep the residents in mind. And make, make sure that this is done in a orderly fashion and that it, safety is in mind, like school buses. Now, your, if your roads have been off up to county standards, the county will take over the subdivision. The maintenance, maintenance of, of that, if they're brought up to county standards. And, uh, we, we don't know, if, if, does anyone, does anyone out say that?
Yes, sir, I, I'm not sure.
And, and if not, that's something that you can deal with when, when you work through the, uh, the final permitting process? You know, has, has the last, uh, has the bond been put up for the, for the final layer of asphalt? All of these are questions that really we need to answer on the front instead of looking at the end of it and saying, uh-oh, my fault.
Well, currently, um, you changed the practice so that we don't even sign the final plaque so they can sell lots until they've completed the roads.
All right.
So, we don't even do the bond process anymore because that's, that's a problem with, with, uh, neighbors like Rice Creek to begin with.
So, I thought you were talking about the, the existing structure. I do know it was paved not too long ago. Because we had trouble with the contractor building a road, turning around there, so we're trying to correct that for them as well.
So you are working with them now?
Yes, sir, I talked to the, uh, with the president of the homeowners association a couple days ago. And, and more in regards to the Morgan Road construction and how, how our contractors are getting in their interest in turning around and that kind of thing. We're gonna work with them and try to do, you know, make it all work as best we can. But keep in mind, Morgan Road, that area has changed drastically, it's got over eighteen thousand cars per day, so our number one focus will be the safety of, you know, of the eighteen thousand. So we'll make sure they get a real safety, easy, good, uh, ingress, egress to meet our standards.
Well, being out of Oklahoma Morgan Road, so we're both invested in that?
You're familiar with eighteen thousand?
So I know, I'm familiar with eighteen thousand, yeah. Where, where, where's your, where's your driveway you say that you use?
It's actually right next to where the Rice Creek is sitting there. We have one house right next to Rice Creek, my house is right after that. So the land that you're living at, eight point five is being sold, my property sits right next to that particular land, and I'm on it, you know? And that's, the private driveway is what I think, that's the driveway that he's talking about using. As you see, on the little tin, you basically see the house with the red tin roof next to the little yellow, that's, that's my house, that's the property I own. And right beside, you see that driveway, that's where the, that's the driveway that he's talking about, that he's gonna have to come down with the stuff he can carry, that's on my property. And or to get all the way back to where you see all that opening, again, that's gonna.
Probably, and that's the city of Hoover right behind you.
You know what? Yeah, when we moved, they told us something different.
And, and, and that, that right behind there is, is, that, that lasts up to, they say it's the city of Hoover, so. All of this is, is so close and it's, uh, it's, it's becoming a, uh, a transitional area where, where it's, it went from a small, it was like a highway when I was a young man. Uh, and now you look at here, I'm not a young man anymore, that's a full lane highway, like it's out of Garland, or that, or that. And it's hard to keep everyone happy. You understand that, that I, and it's hard to keep me there. To, on something like that, but I do understand that progress is gonna take place, and it's our job as a commission to make sure it's done orderly. And we're gonna try our best to make sure it's done and satisfied all of the residents.
And this thing, like you said, and to piggyback on one thing, we all share a young and hard. But, look at it, we're here now, so what sense do it make to come down after everything is built? And you have an incident where a handler, anybody complaining with a one-way entrance, next thing on the media, just blow everything out for four, but when you standing here now saying, hey, here. Me and my wife standing here saying, hey, we can help any kind of way. Go here, let's all get together, let's discuss and talk, work as one. Two, make it, but, I mean, we're not saying we're against it, we're saying we want to try to help support it with the entrance ended out. Boy, man, especially look at, you can come down, just like you said, you said, if you live on the street, come down to it on the rainy day, you see children standing out there at the corner. And then the bus handling, and one way, it's crazy right now. And now we got all this construction going on, why isn't the road? So, they just, I'm not, I'm telling, well, we're looking at, you looking at coming at us maybe another four years from now, five years from now, saying, can we get your driveway, we want to know if you can do it, we can talk right now, that's all we're saying.
And that, that's the man right there, and Heather Carter, is Heather in here? Uh, no. They, they will work with you on that. Right now, all we're doing is, uh, rezoning this property. The plaque will come later and the subdivision plan will come later. And that will be the, the proper time to, to make these changes, am I correct, Cal?
Yes, sir.
So, that, that's where we are. Uh, Cal, would you get this gentleman's name and number and, and please keep him involved, and also the agent.
Yes.
Okay?
Mr. Miller, y'all won't have any problems working with this gentleman, would you?
No, sir. If I can come up and speak to what his concerns are?
Sure.
If it's, with proper engineering, if we can get a second entrance, we'd be glad to build one. My view is right now, I don't think we can, that's not to say that we're not gonna study and see that we can work with roads and transportation engineers. If we can get another entrance in, but we would be really close to the existing entrance, and typically, you want more than about two hundred feet between two city streets or two streets coming out on a major highway, and that's what we have. Because what you don't want to have is where people are making a right turn and a left turn across each other. That's, that's what I'm afraid we're gonna end up with. That's more of an engineering function and a problem than a zoning problem. I mean, my, my view is that would be worked out in the details of the final engineering drawings, only submit the preliminary plan into the plan commission.
And that's just what I said.
Yes, I'm just trying to explain why, when we're showing it like that, not, not that I'm trying to be hard to get along.
No, you, I understand, but we're working with.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
Can I, sir?
Sure, sure.
It looks like his driveway he uses is on your property, will he have an easement through that?
Yes. Now, that, that's, my view of it is, is on, the driveway is on our property, not his, he just has an easement to use, it's not, but I, I'm not gonna get into that right now, it's really not germane, I mean, it is germane. But I, this is not the time or place of debate.
I don't know, for the right price, you might can, uh, okay, so.
But, as, as you see, we don't have, but just a small frontage on Morgan Road, so that'd be the only place we could come in, really, is right there. And I'm not saying we couldn't do it, it's, it's wide enough to get to these, it's, it's fifty feet wide, you could get a right away through there, it's just the awfully close to the existing road disorder that.
Still got some challenges.
Yes, sir. Yes. Appreciate y'all.
Anyone else?
Public hearing is now closed.
I'm the president.
We have a motion to move it and we have to mission scale this, uh, once.
I'll second it, I, I was just wanting to say something. Uh, I will say that my experience, and I was glad to see Mr. Miller this morning, uh, having heard all the details, I know we talked about it in the committee meeting briefly on Tuesday. Um, I know that he is one that, if given the opportunity, he will work with, uh, whoever it needs to, to be worked with in order to work it out. And I appreciate you, Mr. President, I know how it is to want certain things in your area and to have a full understanding before leaving again, so I would have much more to add. So I don't have much more to add to that other than to say, uh, that my experience with him personally, uh, which has nothing to do with anything politically. But personally, he's always been one that if he, uh, is given the opportunity, he's user friendly, uh, within one, so I just wanted to say.
Thank you. Have a motion second, all of first, say aye. The motion passed. Um, number two. Z two zero 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 four seven, Kyle, Kyle Neighbors owner, request a change in zone from R two single family to the I two industrial. The A one agricultural three manufacturing, uh, dwelling in Barnum Bean, Barnum Mill.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, this is a large property on the backside of a subdivision in Fulton Dale. Uh, he wants to rezone it all to A one, he wants to do the Barnum Mill, and then also just some, uh, agricultural use of property, planning, uh, maybe an orchard. So, so things that he missed at the planning and zoning commission meetings, which would require A one zoning in order to be there, in order to do such. But here's a design or what he gave us as a design of the proposed residence. The residence will be built to international building code, which we could even permit in a residential zone. But, uh, you know, after discussing with the applicant, he wanted to go the agricultural route, again, because he wants to do that planning and such. But with the proposed conditions to limit mobile loans as well as to ensure livestock, that should lessen any sort of impact on that projection of residential nature.
Like open public hearing, Z two zero zero four seven, anyone in the audience speak in favor of, or opposed to this?
I'll speak in favor of it.
Yeah.
I am Kyle Neighbors, Mr. Stevens, commissioners. Uh, Mr. Mike, you are my commissioner, and I can clear your pain on Morgan Road as well. I pick up the trash in the front yard every day in my aunt's house. So, uh, I've been working with the USDA, uh, natural resources and conservation and the farmer agriculture in finding something suitable that'll grow over there on that, uh, cumulatively sixty acres. Mr. Mike, it's, uh, it's in your district. And, uh, what I'm getting is the salt sample results came back from Auburn University this week. They're being interpreted by the extension office, and I plan on putting some kind of, uh, crop on that land. So the purpose of the A one will be to receive some of the veterans benefits. And thank you to our veterans in here. Uh, veterans benefits for beginning farmers, uh, and veteran farmers. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, want to take a moment?
Okay. What did you say?
Yes. Well, I know, oh, you but, I was. You move second. All the party say aye. Very much. Next is Z two zero zero four eight. Uh, Robert W. Carroll, Z Woods owner. Uh, Robert W. Wood agent, request a change in zone from A one to R two to A one for residential use. And he's lost and drives Birmingham, Alabama.
Uh, yes, sir. And the, the, this, the zoning that's up the screen, this is, this is a request to solidify the zoning of this property. Uh, being within the zoning district boundary within the property itself, it makes it difficult to finish like determining and determining setbacks, uh, et cetera, et cetera. As well as you for the homeowner or person or the landlord, it could result in questions when it comes to things like financing mistakes. So again, this is just a question to solidify the zoning of the property. There was some question as to whether or not we would pursue a residential zoning or agricultural zoning just due to the fact that it is surrounded by residential subdivisions and is planned for residential growth in this area. However, we're in six, it's kind of a, towards the dead end of a sparse, populated streets, kind of isolated from the rest of the subdivisions that are out there. And so the plan commission thought it was appropriate that A one, and thought that A one zoning was appropriate for the property.
Just time like open. Public hearing on the Z two zero zero four eight, is there anyone in the audience speaking in favor of or opposition to this? Seeing none of the hearing was closed.
Second.
Move second, all the party say aye. Very much. Z two one zero zero one, George Steve Adams owner, agent, request a change in zone from I two industrial to A one agricultural for residential use. This is down in the Rock Creek area. Uh.
Uh, yes, sir, this is just a spot of industrial zoning, it's surrounded by other industrially zoned properties. Uh, does touch some A one zoning to the north, uh, east quarter, uh, but it's not accessed through the same route. Sort of isolated, but the, uh, property owner wants to develop residential use in the future. And he does understand that he's going to be surrounded by other industrial tracks. Most of this is all street mining land, there's also some underground mining in the area, of course, as you're aware. And so, uh, he is aware of taking that risk with all the industrial route zoning in, remaining attack.
It remains, yes, sir. Just time like open public hearing, Z two one zero zero one, is there anyone in the audience speaking in favor of or opposition to this? Seeing none of the public hearing closed.
I'll move you out.
Aye, you move in second, all the party say aye. Aye, very much. Uh, Z two one zero zero two, Ellis Goodson owner. Mary Bryce, an agent, request a change in zone from A one to R G for garden homes for an additional proposed garden home subdivision on Old Rocky Ridge Road.
Uh, yes, sir. Back in October, the commission approved R G zoning for the area, looking at the area that's outlined in the purple. Since then, they acquired an additional tract, which they want to add as a development. Uh, with P and Z's recommendation that they conditioned the number of lots to four, that shouldn't change the overall density that approved in the original development. Um, that's the nature of that condition. Uh, the previous case was met with some opposition primarily to neighbors to the north of the proposed development as a whole. Um, if, if planning the zoning, it wasn't any opposition, uh, at this hearing for the additional four lots on the front. When we get planning, it's only recommended that approved with the condition limiting the number of lots to four so that the overall density of the development, uh, including the track that was approved back in October is just a three point three units per acre, which is the same density as the development just down the street that approved several years ago. You'll see that up here on that old young home road.
Good, thank you. Just time like open case, Z two one zero 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 two. Is there anyone in the audience who would speak in favor of or opposition to this?
Yes, Marty Byden, uh, eighteen seventy one Lakewood Road, Homewood. Uh, I'm the builder and developer of this property, I think I've been able to say to you guys before. And I'm here to answer any questions, I didn't want to add anything to it.
Good, thank you. He's back. Alright, anyone else? Seeing no opposition in the public hearing now closed. Oh, no.
Second.
Move in second, all the party say aye. Alright, thank you very much. Alright, Z two one zero zero three, Randall and Joyce Young. Kevin Dahl, the agent, request a change in zone from C two outdoor amusement. And R one single family, two day more for residential use.
Uh, yes, sir, this is a tract of legacy zoning from C two. On the, uh, the, the parcelment above it has a, uh, a, a, a abandoned pool, I believe it's an abandoned pool, a swimming club. On it, and this property was zoned at the same time as that, since the park got. Uh, the applicant just wants to construct the residence, the applicant also wants to construct a large accessory unit to contain his, uh, personal belongings. Got those, R D, motor vehicles, that sort of thing. Um, with this being accessed through the city of Gardendale, I looked at what Gardendale would require or what would require, what would be different between Gardendale zoning and, and our zoning. And so thus the conditions of no old homes permitted on the property except for temporary emergency relief purposes. Uh, one acre required to reach livestock, animal, horse, similar animal. No more than twenty five foul per acre, per acre permitted, and any all commercial agricultural would be permitted. So again, that's just trying to keep it in line with what the neighboring municipality would allow on the property, since it is accessed through the subdivision in the city.
It just makes the zone through a.
Makes the, makes the use consistent with what, what, uh, Gardendale.
I appreciate that, Mark. What was the, what was the outdoor amusement? Do you know?
There was, again, it was a swim club.
Swim, swim pool.
Yeah. And you could see it on the, what was the area language? You see it on the track up to the north of there.
Yeah.
But all that was zoned at the same time, but since that original zoning, I think it was in the seventies. They have, uh, conveyed these southern two tracks off to different property owners, and now it comes to this new property. But as it stands, I can permit a residence on the property, but I couldn't permit a circus.
Well, there you go. Alright, uh, anyone, let this time like open public hearing, Z two one zero three. Anyone in the audience speak in favor of or in opposition to this? Have a lady here in the back, would you please come up and, uh, state your name and your address and your relation to the property? And whether you're for or against?
My name is Brittany Katie, my address is two four zero five Joseph Circle. Uh, me and Kevin actually own the property, and we're going to put our personal home and garage on it.
So you are in favor?
Yes, sir, we're in favor. We don't want a circus.
Thank you very much.
They all come to me there in the morning.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would speak in favor of or opposition to this? Seeing none of the public hearings closed. I'll move it.
Second.
Move in second, all the party say aye. Aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you very, thank you, commissioner. I'll talk to you at sleep, but can I ask you, I'm a delay, very late. Uh, we have the approval of the minutes next on the agenda. If there are any additions, corrections, or revisions to this committee area. I hope that we, this backs with the ratings and the documents. We have a motion.
Second.
Second. All the party say aye.
Aye.
Very much. Commissioner, you have forty-one resolutions that were properly vetted, uh, in our planning session on Tuesday, and we have one item in the U, uh, business that's going to require unanimous consent. Chair, let me take a motion.
We've got a motion for forty-one.
Is there any, any confirmation of your life pool? Alright, one through forty-one. All the party say aye. Thank you very much. Uh, we have one item of, uh, reunanimous consent. Uh, financial. Let's see where it is. I'll wave it again. I move for unanimous consent, consider item four five. You miss unanimous consent, resolution authorized university fund for the sheriff department with an amount of one million four hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars fifty percent for purchase of twenty-five D topless. We have a motion from Commissioner Knight.
Thanks, sir.
Unanimous consent, we have a second for the official. Mr. De La Verca, will you call or?
Commissioner Ammons?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike?
Aye.
Commissioner Stamos?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stacey?
Yes. We have this resolution authorized impression from the sheriff department, and you save the amount, purchase new bills. I'll go to the other.
Second.
I'll move in second. Uh, Mr. De La Verca.
Commissioner Ammons?
Yes.
Commissioner Mike?
Aye.
Commissioner Stales?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stamos?
Yes. Uh, that concludes our business for the day. Do we have? Can you give me a, 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 do you want to speak now?
God don't want to get too far from that item. Didn't they have something else that they brought before, it was about the, um, sanitization of the jail?
This, that is, that is being dealt with, with county manager's office.
Yeah, we're done, yes, sir.
You're, you're good. Uh. Theo Lefferts, sheriff. Do you have anything to the county attorney's office?
We do not think.
Okay. Uh, what I'm going to do, I'm going to ask, uh, for the commissioners, uh, to speak now, and I won't give Mr. Patel's octium to speak last. Uh, if that's if you don't have any more time to do that. Uh. Alright, uh, commissioner, you're number one.
Thank you, thank you very kindly. Uh, Mr. President, I also want to just say how grateful and, and, uh, that I am appreciated this morning uh, for the celebratory remarks, the support that we're giving to our school systems. Again, kudos and congratulations, um, to Midfield City High School, bringing the state two A championship for the boys. Uh, from the M C schools as relates to Carver High School, the girls varsity basketball team. Uh, I will tell you that the words that we speak, the investment that we make, the encouragement that we give. Um, I want us to be aware that we're making a difference, uh, and especially in challenging times, uh, such as this. It's always good to hear good news. Uh, I want to also bring, uh, for the body, uh, that there is going to be an announcement that will be coming, uh, very soon as relates to, uh, some vaccinations and so forth. And we will make sure to work very closely with Helen, uh, with Tony and, and all of those that need to be, uh, made aware so that people can know that as a commission, we're trying to do as much as we possibly can uh, to provide resources, whether it's, uh, through, uh, COVID testing, vaccinations, food, uh, and any other resources that are available. I'm very grateful for the county manager's office, uh, for the response that we've been allowed to be able to give, uh, on behalf of the county. And the mere fact that we are moving together collectively, which is why I think that we're getting so much accomplished. So thanks, Ms. President, for allowing me this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Okay, sorry, you wanted commissioners. I wanted to give, um, the, 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 um, the number, because we have had so many challenges. I've been working on this, uh, vaccine program since the conception of the company. I think, uh, Walter Jackson and, uh, uh, Mr. Telport actually kept me, me with this and helping with making all of the press conferences. And I know I'm full of, there's so many directions. So we have several scientists being set up, um, uh, commissioners. These sites are being worked and working to make sure that we are partnering with all the facilities that the federal program. We have a, uh, two medical sites that are becoming, two, uh, will stay about, about one will be coming to Jefferson County. That will give, will give all the locations. Please, you have not received all of the locations now is because they do not get out the favorable location put set up yet. We just received a, a phone line, which is, uh, being, uh, that, this is being, that fish has been set up. And the county, uh, health department is actually, uh, running that, the number is two oh five eight five eight twenty-two twenty-one, two oh five eight five eight twenty-two twenty-one. We were at, we're accessing some of the physicians to be patient. We are coming up with different locations, the vaccines are coming down. Uh, we have a small amount that's coming from the state, majority of them are coming from the federal government. Uh, I have been on all of the conference calls, and I have represented the county and the health institution that's, uh, coming through the county, that's why I have been on the call. Uh, uh, me and, uh, Mr. Jackson, he has been on double call. Everything is just now finally moving to where we can get it, to where it is countywide and, and search, uh, and the locations where the vaccines are not. They are, the federal government is sending, uh, the Johnsons, Johnsons here now, who are going to the farm. They are really not actually in none of the federally funded, uh, uh, clinics yet. But they are in, in several pharmacies around Jefferson County. You know, Walmart has them now, so Walmart, uh, C V S, I can go on and on. So now we have more of the, I would say the community, uh, pharmacies now that put their application in. Uh, my office have assisted them on heavy them, get the, uh, the application in. We are also, because my office at two oh five three two five five zero seven four, two oh five three two five five zero seven four. We are also assisting, uh, senior citizens with, uh, actually getting their appointment. We have had so many people that have been displaced because they can't get in on the, uh, the web. And they are struggling to get. and they are struggling to get in on the, uh, uh, the, uh, line uh, because of the amount of people that actually, uh, trying to get in. So we want to just make sure that they can utilize our office, our office to help anyone throughout, uh, Jefferson County. We have, we just got calls from the Black Bill and we have, we got calls from citizens wanting the vaccines sold away but they were willing to travel to Tuscaloosa, uh, and to Anderson and Huntsville to receive the vaccine. So we're trying to, uh, make sure that we are giving everyone the assistance that they, they need. So if anyone have any questions, uh, they can call me at two oh five three two five five zero seven four. Hopefully, our president, Seamus, he will have the list of locations finalized by the end of next week. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Mr. Mike?
Yeah, just, uh, thanks, uh, to the A C C A county board, uh, commissioners. Uh, we got some, uh, several bills, uh, in the legislature. One really is, uh, a little bit concerning because it's the deep dips and dumps bill. Where if you have a probation violation or, uh, parole violation, you get sent back to jail for a few days or over a forty five day period. And so the question is, is, you know, does that back up state prisoners in our jail? So we're working on that, we have, uh, another tax sales, uh, on the courthouse steps, you know, they're changing that to allow it to the, on the courthouse premises or inside the courthouse. Uh, there's a solid waste bill down there that, um, you know, we had this waste issue come up. Uh, so there's another solid waste bill down there, but I think it's, it's, it's going to be okay. Uh, several other things, uh, that we're watching. And the A C C A convention will be held this year, August twenty third to twenty sixth. Um, as you know, they passed the COVID emergency, uh, rescue act, and we'll find out more information on that in the next few days.
Mr. Allen?
Uh, yes, sir, um, uh, we're also, um, with Commissioner Tyson's number that she's given out for support. Um, also the E M A, uh, has a number, uh, that, uh, they beefed up, uh, answering in support with the Bruno on that team, which I, I think was announced with the, uh, Department of Health and E M A. And that number's two oh five eight five eight two 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 one, uh, where you can get, uh, uh, information on vaccine, uh, as well.
Yes, the same one I have now.
Is it? My, my apologies, my apologies.
Okay, now let's get it together.
All right, work together, man.
I'm trying, just call me out, Tyson. Look, she give me attitude on this.
Either we can see you, we can see your attitude on this.
I told the health industry, just let me do my job.
I just, I just, I've been doing, I've just doing what I'm told, uh, see you.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Let's make that expression again, Tyson. All right, guys, let's, I'm, I'm going to wind it up here, but here to quickly know that, uh, Commissioner Knight, that's coming with the solid legs legislation, that's, that's more effective, effectively and efficiently called the boot training legislation. It represents the South side, uh, I was here to pass. We did have another issue up in northern Jefferson County, up in Mount Olive area. Uh, that was just as offensive to the people up there. That, I've been in, that's my district, and I've been in contact with, um, A M and the Jefferson County Park Department. Uh, Jefferson County Park Department has no purview over that at this time. But the, uh, people down at A M were very, they've issued a cease and desist order. And they have a, um, a process in place where if that process is indeed followed, it, this will not reoccur. Uh, they're in the process now of working through, uh, the enforcement a- actions upon this, uh, particular instance. And I look for them, um, to, to work on our behalf to make sure that this is done and done fairly quickly. Uh, I know it was because I had, um, an A M representative call me at seven thirty last night. So they're on it and, and giving what's going to be needed in that series of our citizens. And I, I reminded them that these citizens have the same rights as those that live on, uh, twentieth street south here in Murmurs. And they're entitled to, to, to the same privileges that, that everyone else is. And he agreed and they're working, um, with us and through us to, to get this done. Uh, I think enforcement process is beginning to take place now. And, um, it may require additional legislation, but I don't know that we would have, um, an opportunity to do that in this legislative cycle. But let's look at it, make sure that, see if the process will work. And if we can hold the noxious smells down. And they assured me that, given the proper procedures, that it would do that. And that it is a proper, i- if done properly, it, it would, should not create any noxious of, of. And if it's a case that, uh, policies and procedures were not followed. But with that, last piece of business being said, I want to turn this over to Mr. Patel before we reach this meeting. And, uh, let him continue his, uh, narrative of, of, of his actions at the camp.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, just real quick. Real quick, I'm going to say that, uh, Congress passes, uh, a one point nine trillion dollar bill this week, President goes to sign it tomorrow. We're monitoring with the N A C O on what, uh, N A C O was doing to try to decipher, uh, it was a two thousand page deal on, on the financial aid that's going to be coming to the state of Alabama and Jefferson County and the cities. So we're looking at this, uh, as soon as Treasury comes out with, with guidance on this, then we'll be able to give you a better understanding of, uh, how much money is coming to Jefferson County, what can be used for and what it cannot be used for. So we'll be, uh, the staff that we've had working on it, uh, our CFO, Ms. Dixon, uh, Travis Heskey, Justin, myself and, and some others, will continue to be working on this and give y'all a report as soon as, as soon as Treasury comes out with the, uh, information.
Will we continue with our, with O'Brien again?
I would like to do that, yes.
I, I would expect you to come to us and buy a little supplemental, uh, really good.
Yes, and, and they're still helping us with this, uh, you know, continuing that.
It, it seems to have worked very, very smoothly and, and has allowed us to, um, distribute funds much quicker and more efficiently than, than several others in the state, and we appreciate that.
Well, there was, there's some, uh, I've been monitoring some things for the I C M A organization and, uh, uh, there's county, uh, and, but they did not spend the funds correctly. I'm talking about like forty million dollars worth. And so I feel very confident that the, the money that we dispersed in twenty twenty, uh, once we get audit, that it's going to be a clean audit and we're willing to make sure that whatever we get this time will be a clean audit also. And Will O'Brien was an incredible help too, as the deputy co.
We appreciate that, that's some of your unfinished business.
Yes, yes, thank you.
And Will, thank you. We, we're very lucky to have, like, Will O'Brien, they advise the National County Commission Association.
Right.
They're very into this, so, um, and the state, Alabama County Commission Association has gotten overwhelmed from all the counties.
Yeah.
They have advised that they're not going to be able to do that again with the new bill, because it's, they just don't.
So, yeah, now, and the state, the state, uh, uh, organization, uh, Sunday Street, they did a fabulous job.
They did, but they're not going to be able to do it this time.
They knew it because it's just overwhelming, they don't have the staff. So what we did at the board meetings is kind of semi, said, look, if, whatever you get county, maybe you could contribute five percent or whatever percentage we'll come up with. So that the state association can set up so, a similar advisory to, like, the Will O'Brien, to these other counties. Because there's a lot of counties out there that, they're just lost in. Yeah, and, and the, you know, the smaller counties, they don't have the expertise or the knowledge to even attempt to do something like this. Now, the good thing that we have is the cities, the city, city of Birmingham is going to get it solidly. And, and, uh, and the state's going to, they're going to support all the cities, so we won't have to do that this time, uh, like ours. But it's, it's a, it's going to be a, it's a lot of money and it's going to be, uh, we're going to make sure that we disperse it correctly and get it out to, uh, the entities that need it and make sure we do a, a good job so that when the audit comes through, it's plenty.
And we won't charge you to spend every penny of it.
Yes.
They, they can't, won't do any good if we go back to war.
Right.
And we need to keep it here in Jefferson County.
We, we will make sure that happens.
Tony has said that, you know, by the time that audit comes in, he will not be able to be found.
I'll be at the river. Yes, and I'll show you how to get there.
Yes, uh, that's when we're even be receiving their money, so I, I do have estimate with, uh, how much money they think that they will be receiving. I was on the national call and Mike was telling you this morning.
Yes, yeah, so it's, we all, it's a lot of money coming out, so, uh, and we, we will do like we do with the CARES Act. Uh, try to get the money out to appropriate organizations in a timely fashion and meet the, uh, uh, and when the Department of Justice comes to do that, I mean, Inspector General comes around to do the, uh, audit, that we have a clean audit. That's our goal.
Now, I have seen, or not heard, but I haven't seen in the writing, that you have to spend half of that money within the first sixty days. I haven't seen that in writing on the ad, but that's, woo.
It's, 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 it's a challenge, it really is.
Keep, keep Will O'Brien on speed dial.
Yes, sir, thank you.
That's right. Is that it, Tom?
That's it, yes, sir.
Great job, Tony.
Thank you, man, thank y'all, I thank, and let me say again, thank the commissioners. Uh, I've done several interviews since Tuesday and, 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 uh, and what I say in my interviews is, we have a county commission, y'all may disagree, but we get things done and we're, we operate as a team. You look at cities like Portland and Seattle and, and the other places across the country, they have turmoil going on, we don't have that. And it's leadership and, and commissioners, y'all have done a great job in your leadership leading this camp. I've enjoyed working with all of them.
We may not leave you go yet.
Thank you, too. Yeah, you keep talking like you're leaving and you haven't left yet.
Yeah.
Work us a month fifty business.
Oh, exactly, so.
We just don't talk each other in club if you get behind the door.
There being enough of the leadership, I appreciate it.